Good evening and welcome to the February 12th, 2018 meeting of the Florissant City Council. We have Boy Scout Troop 829 in the audience this evening. Would you like to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shildroth.
Here.
Henke.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Parsons.
President.
Syam.
Lee.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2018? Hearing none, Councilman Caputa moves to approve the minutes seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening. If you would like to speak to us after the meeting, because this is not a question and answer period, we'd be able to, we'd be happy to stay and talk with you. So the first is Diane Distel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Council members. My name's Diane Distel. I represent the Bridge at Florissant. We're an assisted living and independent community located at 1101 Garden Plaza Drive. The reason I'm here tonight is, first of all, I wanted to recognize that we have just celebrated our sixth year in business here in beautiful Florissant. We're happy to be a business partner to all of you and to, and to help the citizens, the senior citizens here in the community. I wanted to let you all know for yourselves and for others that you may care about, we are starting an educational series for adult children. So this is directed to the adult children who are concerned about their elderly loved one, likely trying to live at home alone well past the time that it's really safe to do so. So the literature you're getting is information on that adult children's series. It's starting next Tuesday, February 20th. Will go for a period of eight weeks, so there will be four series, two weeks apart, and would be happy to have any of you join us for those if you would like. The other piece of paper that they are distributing is an ongoing series we have once a month with the Senior Resource Team of North County. It's a variety of educational topics related to seniors, health and wellness, and anyone from the community is welcome to come. There is no RSVP needed for that, for those events. And I appreciate the time in front of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Kenny Green?
Good evening. Hi, everybody. Kenny Green, 1230 St. Richard, Ward 7. I'm here to promote the St. Baldricks Foundation. We're still going to have it at Show Me's. Even though we had some misfortune there, we're going to still come together as a community and represent our, our businesses and keep things going in Florissant positive. We're going to stay positive on everything. St. Baldricks, it's a foundation that takes funds to promote, well, they promote research for children with cancer. That's what we're doing. And if anybody knows anything about it, we shave heads to raise money for cancer research for children. I understand that six of our council members have already got a head start on us, but we're going to continue on this. So I would really appreciate everybody's participation in this. We're still looking for some, some items to put on display for our silent auction, and, and I thank you for your help. March 25th at Show Me's. Show Me's Florissant. If you need help finding the page and you want to donate online, you can go to Show Me's Facebook page, Show Me Florissant's Facebook page, or you can go to Show Me's Florissant website. Thank you.
And you will be shaving, correct? You are one of the participants?
If you get enough money. If you do it, I'll do it. Bring it some money.
We'll think about that.
Yes, I am participating.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Toco and Mr. Mosher, are you here for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Wait, we'll just wait till then?
Yes.
Is that okay? All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. And the next item is public hearings. So we have public hearing number 1802005.
Notice this hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance has amended that a public hearing will be held by the City Council of the City of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, and the council chambers at 9:55 Uhr through St. Francois on Monday, February 12th, 2018, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To issue an amendment to B-5 ordinance number 5733 as amended by ordinance numbers 5896 and 7401 to allow for the remodeling of a retail establishment, target for the property located at 2341 North Highway 67, citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630, TDD, 839-5142.
Thank you. Is the petition present?
Yes.
Good evening. Can we back, come up? And then if you're going to need the overhead projector, it's on, on the top. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Chad Feigum, 2550 University Avenue West, St. Paul, Minnesota. I'm with Kimley Horn and Associates, and I'm here on behalf of Target Corporation to request approval for an amendment to the B-5 planning, planned commercial district ordinance for an exterior remodel of the Super Target store located in Florissant. Target is undergoing a nationwide effort to update the exterior appearance, appearance of the stores, including the Florissant store, with facade and signage improvements to refresh the Target brand to a more contemporary and modern appearance. The remodel plans include adding stonewood siding as a permitted architecture feature, as well as replacing the existing wall signage. A new white order pickup sign will be added above the entrance to identify the entry point for collecting online orders. The existing Target sign above the storefront will be replaced with a white bullseye near the same location, and a new white bullseye will be added on the east elevation. The front entry will be repainted with silver smith coating and primer, and the existing brick will remain as is.
Could you do me, do you have a picture of the drawing, or you want me to pull mine? Just so the audience knows what we're talking about?
Sure.
If you can put it there on the projector. I'm sorry. There it is. Thank you.
As part of the exterior remodel, Target is proposing to install stonewood phenolic resin panels in Nantucket oak color above the storefront entrance, around the entry canopy and various pilasters on the southeast and west facades. The cast oak color will be above the storefront entrance, but directly underneath the proposed Nantucket panels. Target feels that the cast oak and the Nantucket oak colors balance each other very well and have warm, rich tones that should read well on the facade with the existing building materials and complement other adjacent developments. The stonewood panels are made of phenolic resin that is durable for all weather conditions. It passes stringent NFPA 285 standard fire testing for all assemblies and is a high impact resistant material for areas with high traffic. The material is a non-forest surface that is easy to clean and graffiti, graffiti resistant and has a 10-year warranty with simple long-term maintenance that allows Target to replace singular panels as needed. The material also offers sustainable design benefits and contributes to lead credits in multiple categories and is manufactured with renewable energy. The stonewood architectural panels will account for approximately 25% of the front facade with the existing masonry to remain at 70. On the east and west elevations, the panels will cover approximately 7%, leaving 90% masonry. I have brought along a sample of each color.
Do you want to give those to our city attorney? Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Councilmen Syam?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of questions. So it sounds like this remodeling isn't so extensive that you actually need to close the store for it. It would probably remain open during the time, and there won't be a lot of construction vehicles, probably just platforms in front of the store, and that's really about it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And you're not planning on painting any of the bricks or anything like that? Just installing the siding, but that's about it?
Yeah.
Okay. And just generally, what's your schedule for completing this?
Well, I think, you know, based on the approval schedule, Target is planning to get out there as soon as possible to, to finish as soon as possible.
Okay.
They want to stay, stay in the market and stay competitive in the market, then I think that this allows them to do that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Okay. And then just move that microphone a little bit closer to you. Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Councilman Caputa?
Thank you, Mr. Council. Yes, is this the actual material that you're using, and this is just a sample that's cut down, correct?
Correct. Correct.
All right. That says stonewood, right?
Yes.
Have you used this material before?
Yes.
On any of your stores?
Yes.
So it's pretty good, resistant. I know your target's from Minnesota, and so if it stands up to Minnesota weather.
Yeah, I actually visited a store in Medina, just outside of the, kind of the central downtown area there, out to the west side, and they held up very well. They've been, and they're, they're nice where the way they fastened, you know, onto the, the existing structure is that they can take out portions of panels that, you know, either get damaged or are in disrepair, and they can take out just that panel and then replace just that panel. So it's, it's very, you know, non-labor intensive and
Thank you.
Very durable. They're made in Wisconsin.
Good. American-made product. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Seeing none, Councilman Syam moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Councilman Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. Well, we are coming to the moment Florissant has been waiting for. Public hearing number 1802006.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Uhr through St. Francois on Monday, February 12th, 2018, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Chick-fil-A Incorporated DBA Chick-fil-A to allow for the establishment of a sit-down, carry-out, and drive-through restaurant, and signage for the property located at One Flower Valley Shopping Center in a B3 zoning district. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630, or TDD, 839-5142.
Thank you. Mr. Toco, Mr. Mosher?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Joe Toco, 1233 Leighton Estates Court, O'Fallon, Missouri. Excited to be here.
Yeah, up on your top, up top right.
There you go.
Okay, so I am here on behalf of Chick-fil-A requesting approval for our special use permit for Chick-fil-A for the establishment of a sit-down, carry-out, and drive-through restaurant, and signage for the property located at One Flower Valley Shopping Center. It does sound like there's some familiarity with Chick-fil-A, but just at a high level. Truett Cathy founded Chick-fil-A in 1964. There's approximately 2,400 locations right now around the country. They're in 48 of 50 states. It is still a family-run corporation. We've been looking in Florissant for quite some time. So Phil has been great with staff that we've been working with. I'm sure we've been working with him for over two years when we initially did the site investigation report to identify the site. It was determined that the special use permit was the best route to move forward. Recently, we went into the Planning Commission meeting, received unanimous, unanimous approval. There were a couple comments that we tried to address in this latest plan that I'm showing here. I think you should have this in your packet. This is probably going to be a little difficult to read. There was a suggestion to add a couple concrete bollards in the patio area. This is adjacent to a couple of the parking stalls, and there was a safety concern, so we went ahead and put that into our design. So we do believe that should address that concern. The second comment was, we had an initial 40-foot sign proposed that would be a combination of the Kmart, Chick-fil-A, and future tenants. There was apprehension that 40 feet was too large. There was a request to reduce that sign size to 25 feet, and in speaking with the developer, this is a two-pole sign, and, you know, with it being Kmart and the request for additional tenants in the future, what we like to recommend is a 32-foot sign as a compromise. That would yield a 10-foot clear space from the bottom of the panels. We think aesthetically and for just pedestrians walking by, that would be the right solution. Driving the area, we feel like that's reasonable and would be consistent with the dual tenant signs along Lindbergh, and we think with that, we're ready to move forward on this project. So excited to be here, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Syam?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is actually going to be located in my ward, and so on behalf of all of my residents, I just wanted to welcome you, because I've been being asked about this for years, actually.
Excellent.
When are we going to get a Chick-fil-A? Are we going to get a Chick-fil-A? And I mean, every time I go knocking on doors and talking to people, I get asked that question. So we're going to be happy to have you, and, and I appreciate you being here and everything. I was going to ask about the, your, so the reader board that you were just talking about, is that actually going to be 40 feet back from the street, or is that going to be, because you said it was going to be about 32 feet high, but I just wanted to ask, like, how far back from the street it would be?
Sure. And I've, I've got an illustration just to show you. So, let's see. Again, my apologies, this is difficult to read, but I do believe that it is approximately 35 feet back, 30 feet, excuse me, back from the road, from Lindbergh. This, this island that's illustrated here does not currently exist, so this is where the McDonald's sits on this side where my pen is pointing. This will come in, and then we tried to push the sign back as far as we could within that island. If we were to go beyond the island, we would basically be putting the sign right, right on top of the building.
Okay. And you don't have any plans to have a reader board on the New Hall's Ferry side, or to use the Kmart sign over there?
So there's one Kmart sign currently, right where the building is illustrated here. That will be removed, and a sign will be installed here. In speaking with the developer, there may be another request to put a sign along New Hall's Ferry.
Right.
And that's not part of our proposal tonight.
Okay, but that may come down the pike later on.
Perhaps. I think there'd probably be a desire for that as that, as that development continues to, to move forward. There is no reader board on this sign. I do have a quick illustration, if that's okay, if I pull it up. It's in here, I promise.
That's fine. Take your time.
So this was our attempt at making a 25-foot sign. The concerns we had here again is that we were not yielding 10 feet from bottom to the bottom panel. The developer would like to add another row of tenant panels for future use, which is really driving the 32-feet request. So the end, the end result would be the Kmart sign, and then a couple panels that would, that would be approximately 22 feet in height, and then yielding the 10-foot clear space at the bottom.
Okay. And then I was going to ask about your, your dumpster enclosure. Is it going to be high enough to actually cover the dumpster? In which direction will it be facing? Because I can kind of see it in the back there, but sometimes I've noticed some of the enclosures around our business area are like, the dumpster's a little high, so you can see it peeking out the top. I know that's a little bit picky, but I was just wondering if yours would be high enough to contain that or to screen it properly?
Yeah, great question. So first, this is Lindbergh here, so the dumpster will be facing away from Lindbergh. In fact, it will be probably hidden by the building from most angles that you're driving by and seeing it, and the dumpster enclosure is tall enough that if you're to the side of it, you would not see the dumpster enclosure over the wall that's built, the masonry wall.
Okay. And is there a, do I read that correctly? Is there a fence around the building, or is that just a property line? Do you see what I'm asking?
Sure. That, that's not a fence. There is a railing that goes along here.
Sir, could you just, if you're going to move that way, you need to move the bike. You can take it out and hold it.
Oh, man.
How's that?
Lots of flexibility here. There is a fence here, a railing. There is no fence here. You are seeing some illustrations of a drive-through canopy. So this is the latest prototype that Chick-fil-A will be putting here in Florissant. This may be the first one that comes in the greater St. Louis area, and then these are really intended for the customers to actually be underneath. There's gas and electric brought to these for heaters and coolers. But no, there is no fence around there that I'm aware of.
Okay. And as far as, as far as traffic goes, I guess from the, from the North Highway 67 side, you're basically counting on people to either turn left at the traffic signal and go around McDonald's, or they're just going to turn in and come in straight from North Highway 67 between Burger King and McDonald's, right? That's probably what you're expecting?
Sure. I mean, from New Hall's Ferry, or from further past McDonald's, or really from right here in between McDonald's and Burger King.
Yeah.
There could be access in. So they will find us, is my expectation and hope, and, you know, stacking here, I think there's, there's, this is really a max amount of stacking for us. And with the, with the canopies that we've offered, we, we feel like we're going to be able to bring people through at an optimal speed, and that would never stack beyond that.
Okay. And is, is there a certain way to guide traffic from the New Hall's Ferry side, or can they just drive in the parking lot however they want to until they get there?
I'm not sure if there's proposed, I'm, I'm not aware of proposed signage on New Hall's Ferry at this point that would bring people in. There is directional signage on site that will help the customers get in and off-site, but short of that, that's probably the extent of the signage that we currently have proposed.
Okay, and can, it's a little hard for me to see from here. What is going to be the traffic pattern around the building for the drive-through?
Sure. So assuming you were to come in off Lindbergh here, and you would go down this access drive here, here is the Burger King, you would come down here, and this would be, these two points would really be the optimal points where the customers would come in. There is dual access, dual traffic going around the site, but this would really be for where all of the, the drive-through traffic is here. There is a bypass lane here.
Okay.
And then the, the arrows are probably hard to read, that would get people in and off the site. And then this would be the, the main area of egress here for people leaving the drive-through lane.
Okay, so they're leaving at the top, then?
Yes, sir.
And they're coming in at the bottom. Okay.
That's, that's correct. This would be the entry point.
And just a couple more questions, and then the, the plan was for a couple of the parking lot lights to come down, so are those going to be replaced and, you know, make sure to keep the parking lot well lit at night?
You know, I don't know that offhand. I'm certain that we'll keep within all of the appropriate code for lighting requirements, but I'm sorry, I can't answer that with, with confidence right now about which lights come down and which ones will be up.
Okay.
But I know that is part of the code, and that is absolutely something we'll be adhering to.
Okay, that's fine. And then also the schedule. When are you going to start the construction? And then, of course, everybody's going to be looking forward to the grand opening, so we would need a date for that, too.
So there is some delivery condition from the developer, and as soon as that gets done, we'll be identifying a local operator, and then we'll be going right away. So I expect in the not-too-distant future.
Okay. Few months, maybe? Something like that?
Yeah, I think, so it's February. We hope this year, as fast as possible, we'll get started.
Okay, but we don't have a definite date yet, it sounds like.
I don't. I don't.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir.
I think Mr. Syam's ready to put his tent up, you know, for the grand opening day.
How did you know?
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Welcome to Florissant.
Thank you, sir.
Most of my questions have been answered, but I, I do want to discuss the, the patio feature. The, the bollards you spoke of, are those going to be blocking the patio feature that you have for the customers?
They will be located along the railing, as you can see here. So we have them, sorry. We have them at the, really at the turn, really at the most exposed point where one might be driving in. We have started to talk a little bit about aesthetically what those could look like. There's some neat bollards around town that have a wooden encasing. We haven't really landed on that yet, but something nice would be preferred.
All right. You'll understand, I've never been in one of your restaurants, but my wife and kids have threatened me.
Excellent. Okay. It's good leverage.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
Actually, Madam President, Mr. Syam was very thorough. He's already, he's already asked my question, and they've been answered in regards to traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome, Mr. Toco.
Thank you.
I have a couple questions. Is, is this a corporate, corporate store, or is it a franchise store?
So it's a unique franchise agreement in that Chick-fil-A corporate is on the lease agreement. Chick-fil-A will be funding the, the investment, and then there's a local profit sharing agreement that the operator will have. So it's really a hybrid of the two, but ultimately it's Chick-fil-A Inc. that is on the lease agreement, and then there's a, an agreement for the operator to perform the business.
I know Mr. Syam asked about when construction was going to start. Have you let the bids out yet, or is...
No, sir. We still have to go, once we get approval here, that'll kind of be the catalyst for us to engage in construction documents, draft those, and start going through the building permit process, and then once we're, you know, either having building permit in hand or close, we'll consider going out for bid.
Now, do you use local contractors, or do you have your own contractors through your, through Chick-fil-A?
There are regional contractors that we've used in the past. So Hampton and Chipewa and Ellisville were both done by regional contractors. They were not local. There is talk about identifying a local general contractor here in St. Louis based on the volume of activity. I think we, being here in St. Louis, I think that would be great to have someone, you know, local as part of the bidding process, but that's still to be determined.
Good. Yeah, because, um... Yeah, because I know Florissant, North County area is a very labor-friendly, friendly area of St. Louis County and hopefully you, you can take that in consideration when you, when you go out for your bids.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just want to ask, we have a lot of problems with our trash in our parking lots. Will you guys have two trash cans in the front or can we please get them?
I'm trying to think and where the trash cans are typically located. There's certainly one in the patio area and there's typically one when you're leaving the restaurant. Great culture within Chick-fil-A for anyone and everyone working there to pick the trash up when they're walking around. I don't know if you've seen that or if you've not been to one of the locations, but I, I think there's likely to. I, I just don't know offhand where they would be located right now.
Okay. Can we make a suggestion to you that we do get them in the plans because we push that very hard?
Sure.
As far as keeping our parking lots cleaned up and I think it's very handy to have them here.
Yeah, I think that would be no problem.
Exits and entrances. I think everybody sees them and uses them if they're there.
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Childroth?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Tocle, I just want to tell you, thank you for coming to Florissant. This business by far is one of the most requested by the residents in my ward since the, the day I got elected. That's back in '05, so I want to thank the administration for making this happen because a lot of people are, have been asking about it for quite a long time and it's a feather in the cap for the city of Florissant. You're in a tight space there, but I want to commend Chick-fil-A. I've been to the one in Brentwood Plaza.
Sure.
And Chesterfield Valley and I'm quite impressed with the manner in which they handle traffic in a very tight area on a very busy thoroughfare. They get out there and get the people through the, the drive-through line and it's quite a sight to see. And it's, happens in the heat of summer and the cold of winter. So I really don't have any concerns about traffic because I think you guys will do quite well there and the traffic will, will be fine. You guys are closed on Sunday.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I, I think it's going to be great and I'm glad you're here, sir.
Thank you. And we are excited about these canopies because that will be new to the greater St. Louis area. I think this will be the first one to get them and it's just an indication and a commitment that the employees with the iPads will be upstream, taking the orders and that's really a major reason the speed is able to happen the way that it does. So, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just wanted to follow up on a, a question that Mr. Caputa asked earlier. In terms of the, the local operator, is that a, do you have the name of that corporation or is it an individual or what's going on with the local operator?
So the intent for the operator agreements is one operator, one store. So it will be someone that will live here in the community. It will likely just be one person at this stage. As Chick-fil-A has expanded rapidly across the country, there have been now circumstances where an operator may have two stores and in some circumstances, three stores. Those are in some of the most dense areas around the country. I expect here, similar to the rest of the operators in the St. Louis area, it would be one for this store. That person has not yet been identified.
Okay, I understand. And, and Keith is right, I've gone to the one in Brentwood and it is very well-run, so probably too many times I've been there. Thank you.
Mr. Hanky?
Without laboring the point, welcome to Florissant.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Siam?
Thank you, Madam President. I just remembered a couple other questions I had. Is the, the address of the building, what is it going to be? Because the engineering plan says one little flower shopping center, so I didn't know if that was correct or not.
It's my understanding that once a building permit is issued and approved, an address will be created. So that one, it does not exist because it's a parking lot at this point.
Right. So you're going to probably buy out a parcel of the parking lot and it'll have an address established like later on down the road or something like that?
Again, as soon as the building permit is issued, I believe, an address will be created.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor?
Well, it's no longer a rumor. It was the worst-kept secret in the, in the city. And we're very happy to have your investment in our community and we're proud to have you as part of our Florissant business family. And I know you guys ask us, you know, you, you wanted to make your own announcement and you ask us to keep it a secret and I didn't, I didn't tell a soul that you were coming, but while there was a couple seniors, maybe a few council members, a couple teenagers, other, I mean, we really try to keep this secret, but welcome to Florissant.
Yeah, thank you. We're excited. Thank you, sir.
I think you also, I'm just very jealous that you're not coming into my ward, so I can get the kudos that Mr. Siam is, but that's okay. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment? Seeing none, Councilman Siam moves to close this public hearing seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Moving forward to your opening. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second readings. At the rec, well, I guess we're going to have second reading on 9339. And at the request of the petitioner, Councilman, Shuldroth moves to postpone bill number 9339 to February 26, 2018. I will second that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Oh, did you want to speak, Mr. Shuldroth?
Make the motion, that's fine.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is new business. And we have under new business, board appointments. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I would like to reappoint Andrew Harris to the Citizens Participation Committee.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to reappoint Janice Damming from Ward Seven and Margaret Marasecki from Ward Three to the Senior Commission.
Councilman Egan moves to approve the mayor's, mayor's appointment, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made. Next, we will move to request and at this time I will excuse myself and Vice President Caputa will come up.
I move to accept the application for the transfer of special use permit 7628 from J. Montgomery Auto Repair to J. Pagano Automotive Group Incorporated located at 1915 Washington. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none.
Okay. Now she can come in. Come back in. Okay. Now she can come in. Okay. Now she can come right back. Okay. So, Councilman, Shuldroth moves to approve the application for Linda Myers to keep three hens located at 680 St. Brendan Lane. Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Councilman Caputa moves to approve the application for Alan Stranger to keep four hens located at 1405 Angeles Drive. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Councilman Shuldroth moves to approve the application for Michael DeSalvo to keep three chickens located at 504 Harrison Street. Seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Got a regular forearm over here right now. Councilman Jones moves to approve the application for Lauren Harvath to keep one pot-belly pig located at 100 Papeno Lane. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion to engage him. I knew somebody was going to come up. I was trying to get through the tongue twister of all the pot-belly pigs on Papeno, but, okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is first readings. We have bill 9347.
Ordinance authorizing repainting of masonry for the, for First Collinsville Bank located at 14040 New Hall's Ferry Road.
Mr. Siam, are you moving?
I'd like to move for a second reading. This is basically a simple color change, not even a, a significant one at that, and we already approved the painting of the masonry in principle, so.
Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing the repainting of masonry for, for First Collinsville Bank located at 14040 New Hall's Ferry Road.
Councilman Siam moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Hanky. Roll call, please.
Shuldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing repainting of masonry for the, for First Collinsville Bank located at 14040 New Hall's Ferry Road.
Thank you. Motion passed, right? Oh, we're on third reading. I lost my whole train. Oh, there we go. Before, before the final vote, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Seeing none? Councilman, poll council for the final vote. I, yeah, what's up?
Shuldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. 8384, I think. Bill number 9347 passes and becomes ordinance number 8384. I will be, see, I got myself a step ahead of myself is what I was doing, so, there we go. I will again excuse myself. Thank you. I need to be excused. I need to get my phone off.
Next item on the bill is?
9348.
Bill number 9348. Clerk, please read bill.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7628 from J. Montgomery Incorporated, DBA Montgomery Auto Repair to J. Pagano Automotive Group Incorporated, DBA Joe's Automotive for the operation of auto repair business located at 1915 Washington.
Mr. Lee moves for a second.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Shuldroth. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7628 from J. Montgomery Incorporated, DBA Montgomery Auto Repair to J. Pagano Automotive Group Incorporated, DBA Joe's Automotive for the operation of auto repair business located at 1915 Washington.
I move for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Shuldroth. Roll call.
Shuldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Sorry.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Any citizens like to speak on this bill? Come forward and please express your opinion.
Seeing none?
Mayor?
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Mr. Pagano for investing in the city. He's invested in, in different locations before. He's been a, a successful businessman here in Florissant and I wish you all every success.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I don't want to make this too easy. Could the petitioner come forward? So I got a lot of hard questions, so.
I'm good. Let's go.
When do you hope to open, Mr. Pagano?
Uh, we're going to close next Friday.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Great, good. Anyone?
Thank you, Ms. Pagano.
Jones?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Joe, you're going to have some trash cans out front. I mean, you ain't no different than everybody else, Joe. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
See you no more?
Clerk?
Poll the council for the final vote. Shuldroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano? Sorry. Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Have it.
Okay, bill number 9348 becomes ordinance 8385. Thank you.
Ms. Pagano?
We have bill number 9349.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B5, ordinance number 5733, as amended to allow for remodeling of the retail establishment target for the property located at 2341 North Highway 67.
Bill 9350?
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Chick-fil-A Incorporated, DBA Chick-fil-A to allow for the establishment to sit down, carry out, and drive-through restaurant and signage for the property located at 1 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Bill number 9351?
Ordinance amending ordinance number 8183, establishing a new compensation plan for seasonal part-time employees of the city of Florissant to increase pay for certain positions that fall below the state minimum wage requirements.
Seconded by Mr. Shuldroth. All in favor?
Ordinance amending ordinance number 8183, establishing a new compensation plan for seasonal part-time employees of the city of Florissant to increase pay for certain[1690.83]
All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance amending Ordinance Number 8183, establishing a new compensation plan for seasonal part-time employees of the city of Florissant to increase pay for certain positions that fall below the state minimum wage requirements.
Mr. Shuldrough moves for a third. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. Roll call, please.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill Number 9351 passes and becomes Ordinance Number 8386. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Councilman Shuldrough?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to congratulate Ward Five resident Nathan Bennett and his wife Christine, the owners of Handel's Market, on being named the North County Chamber Business Persons of the Year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, like I say, every council meeting, if you're a firearm owner, make sure you secure your firearm. Do not leave it in your vehicle. Make sure your cars are locked every night. Make sure you keep your front porch light on. Light is some of the best deterrent for crime, so make sure you... Try to be conscious of that. And also, join your Neighborhood Watch program. Florissant has a very good Neighborhood Watch program, and I encourage every resident to join your Neighborhood Watch. Get ahold of your ward captains, or call City Hall, and they will direct you to the right person. Cars left unattended while they're being warmed up. We have this problem every year. Make sure, citizens of Florissant, to keep your cars... Do not start them and warm them up. I know we're all guilty of it, but we've been having a lot of car thefts over the winter on this, so please be conscious of that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Egan?
Thank you very much, Madam President. We are rapidly getting towards our annual St. Ferdinand Charity BBQ and basketball tournament. It runs from the 24th and 25th of February through the month of March. We have world-class barbecue, award-winning barbecue, every weekend, and we have some really competitive games. Our beneficiary this year is Cooper Tracy, who is a three-year-old Florissant boy who has been diagnosed with neuroplastoma. I'm very happy to report that he just finished his fifth round of treatment and is doing very, very well. Cooper is very close to the Florissant family and all of us personally on this diet, so come out and see us at St. Ferdinand Church, beginning on the 24th and 25th of March, or 24th and 25th of February, and going through the month of March. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I'd like to give a shout-out to Team Like I Always Do. It's our food pantry a street over from here. We're always looking for volunteers, some canned goods, some extra change in the car, or if you've got a couple extra bucks for a little overtime, you can stop by there and pitch in. Another thing I'd like to bring up, the EPA has finally made a move on Westlake on a partial cleanup. I think everybody is happy that the EPA has finally made a move. I think everybody is upset because it's only a partial cleanup. The river is very close to that site, so our water table is very shallow. My personal opinion, it all needs to be taken out of there. There's no excuses why they shouldn't. There's highways right near there. There's railroad tracks right near there. I've worked on most of these sites where that's always been a big problem, where they have not had the railroad tracks or the highway so close. So, hopefully, the public can push a little harder to get this whole thing cleaned up. Another thing I'd like to let the public know, that me and Councilman Caputa and a young lady named Ashley out of Jeff's Ward went to the public hearing as far as the St. Louis American Water wanting to raise our rates. That was ridiculous, what they was asking for. We spoke in front of the water company itself and the Public Service Commission that oversees if those rates can be put in place. Like I said, that's terrible, what they're asking for. I know we're all having water main breaks up and down our streets right now, but they knew this for some time, that our infrastructure has been failing. To come hit the public with something like this is ridiculous. Not to go too radical on you guys, but if you go and look at some of the CEOs, monies they're making, it's in the millions. The top five guys are in the millions. When I say millions, three or four million apiece for a yearly wage, I mean, that's kind of ridiculous, and then to come and beat on the poor public for a 48% raise is out of hand, ridiculous, and uncalled for. We did explain to them in length, me and Mr. Caputa, about we do have senior citizens on fixed incomes, and even our trash company will do something for our seniors out there on fixed incomes. There's no excuse why these guys couldn't do it, too. But 45% and 48%, that is out of hand. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Mr. Pagano. Yes, I forgot to say, so I was going to piggyback on what Mr. Jones said about Westlake, and HBO is doing a documentary on it. Actually, tonight, they had one start at seven on HBO. So, it should be on HBO West in a couple more hours. So, if you have HBO on your cables, make sure you catch and watch that. It's called Atomic Homefront. It's on the Westlake Quarry. Westlake Quarry is the oldest nuclear dump site in the world, and it just happened to be in our backyard, so if you can, make sure you catch that on HBO. Should be a good documentary. Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, one thing I forgot to say, all you people out there that has had water main breaks in your driveways, your streets, your yards, everybody is aware of that, you guys. I know it hasn't been fixed for over a month now. It's going to take some time. Shout-out to the water company employees, too. They're doing as best they can for what they have, but I know we have water main breaks all over right now. They are fixed as far as the water coming out, but as far as driveways getting patched, yards getting fixed. I've had about six calls just this week on that. We did not forget about you guys. The city did jump in and get involved in that, you guys. I tip my hat to the mayor and the city employees for coming out and doing some of the work that the water company should be doing, but they're so overloaded right now. We did have our broom out. We did have some of our labors out from the street department cleaning some of these streets up, shoveling a lot of the mud ourself on our dime. We are going to try to go after some of that, which we have spoke to the water department on, that we should get reimbursed for that. But we are trying. Don't think that we're not, you guys. We see the water main breaks. They are reported in. It's just it's going to take some time to get this stuff fixed. Thanks.
I would like to take a moment to congratulate Councilman Egan on his promotion to captain in the Maryland Heights Police Department. Very proud of you, Joe. Well deserved. Also, we will be having a council work session on February 20th, 6:30 PM, at the J.J. Egan Center. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce that we're having a public hearing on February 27th on the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's an evaluation report. It's something that we're required to do every year. Florissant is the only community in St. Louis County large enough to have our own Community Development Block Grant Program. So, that public hearing will be February 27th here in the council chambers at 5:00 PM. And then if you can't make it, the council chambers, and you'd like to weigh in, you have until March 14th to call our Community Development Office at 839-7680, or 839-5142. So, that's coming up this month. Couple weeks ago, we had, again, the theater hosted high school students in an event called Poetry Out Loud. It's a competition where each contestant memorizes and presents, interprets, three poems from different poets throughout history, including Shakespeare. I attended this year... Usually, I attend, and they have three poems that each contestant do, and I usually stay for the first round. This group of eight students from around St. Louis County was so good that I stayed for all three readings, and I predict that our winner will win state and that they'll go on to Washington, DC. So, they're going to go to Jefferson City. The winner of our Florissant contest will go to Jefferson City, and then they'll go to... The winner of that will go to the national in Washington, DC. We're having a skating session on holiday next Monday, and on February 19th, it's a free skate for residents. Residents Appreciation Skate. It's our third free skate. It's 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM next Monday. And then the Dare Age children from eighth grade to eighth grade will have a skate night just for them on Friday, March 2nd, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM at the ice rink, of course. Residents is $5, and non-residents is $7. And again, you have to be like either in fifth, sixth, or seventh or eighth grade. And that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. The next regular meeting for the Florissant City Council will be on Monday, February 26, 2018. Councilman Hanky moves to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried, and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for attending.